Yes, do them all order.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So kings and queens.
Is this for the public hearing?
Oh, thank you. This is important. Okay, alright. Okay. Excellent. Okay, I would like to open the public hearing on the annexation of Deer Yard properties to the Lutson Township. Is there anyone here who would like to speak at the public hearing? Please come forward and sign in. Thank you. And state your name and reason for being.
My name is David Morris. I live at 320 West Deer Yard Road. Approximately two years ago, after talking with the other full-time residents of the county, we went to Lutson Township and discussed with them the initiation of a procedure that would bring the lots that are in the Deer Yard Lake Association into Lutson Township. Our reason for doing so was that as full-time residents of the county, we felt a strong connection to Lutson Township. People such as Jeff Latz, who owns the property on which the Clearview businesses and other businesses are located, lives and is my neighbor. John Overholzer, who works for Timber Wolf Real Estate in Lutson, is my neighbor. So that along with the others who signed the petition, we felt that we would like to participate in the affairs of Lutson Township because it was our community. So I gathered the signatures on the petition that's been submitted to you. Also, I am president of the Deer Yard Lake Association, which represents 29 separate parcels of property or lots. In that capacity, I kept the members of the association informed of the procedure, including the initial appearance that occurred a month ago and of this public hearing. And I advised them that I recognize that their interests might be different than those of the full-time residents because for them, this is not their home. And the admission or the annexation of this property into the township would mean a tax increase for them that would not otherwise occur. So I offered them the opportunity to contact Brady Powers directly, and I've done that on two separate occasions, including approximately 10 days ago before this meeting with the clear communication that I was acting and had signed the petition along with the full-time residents in my individual capacity and not as president or in any way representing that the association had taken any formal position because we may in fact have different views within the I had approximately, I think, four or five people contact me with questions after my communication, and all of them, while not expressing joy at additional taxes, did say that they would defer to those of us who were full-time residents with regard to our judgment of the benefits of being part of the township, which would allow us to participate and in effect represent their interests as well as our own by being voting members of the township. I don't know whether there have been any communications directly to Brady Powers or not, but I have not received any communications myself as president of the association that were negative with instructions to convey those to you as commissioners. That really, that's my statement.
Okay. Thank you, David. Okay.
Yeah, I can say I've not received any communications either way, other than the people I've been in contact with regarding the petition and having the petition itself. And I handed out, you can see the, you've seen this before when we had our committee of the whole. So this is the map, and in the dark black outline, you can see the map of the proposed annexation that attaches to Lutson Township. And it includes those, all the people that signed the petition. And then also you had the notice of the public hearing that was required by statute. There's a copy, that's the second page. That was posted out in the area also, as well as in our office. And then you have a copy of the resolution from the town of Lutson that was passed on April 18th, 2017, signed by all of the supervisors of Lutson Township. And then I included a copy of the statute regarding the town's annexation, change of boundaries, names, et cetera. And you have all the information from the, the previous meeting from the attorney looking at the statute and that the state really puts it in our hands for making these local annexations. And our county attorney agrees that we've met all the requirements of the statute, that there's no reason not to go forward with it at this time. The only thing after it's done, then what we'll still have to do is prepare an estimate of the population and the number of households and submit that to the state demographer. We'll have to certify that. And they'll use that, we'll have to change our election system boundaries and such things that are in our tax system. We'll have to make some of those technical changes.
Thank you. So are there any others that would like to speak to the public hearing? Seeing none, hearing none, I'd like to close the public hearing and open the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Cook County. So, thank you. And so the first item, well, the first item on the agenda is to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And then, don't go away.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the body for which it stands, one nation, united bond, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Adjustments to the agenda, and I guess this is where, yes?
Madam Chair, I'd make, I'd make a couple. We just distributed to you a resignation letter from Deputy Croto from the Sheriff's Department, so I would like to add action to refill that deputy position, accept the resignation and refill that deputy position. I've also been asked by Rena Rogers to pull item 7A because they are waiting for some additional material from one of the other providers that is affected by their contract, so we've pulled 7A. And then I would ask Mr. Powers if it's appropriate for us to put action on the annexation.
Yes.
Add it to the agenda at this point.
Okay. So seeing as we are moving right along, I would maybe put the annexation issue right after the consent agenda. Great. Any other additions to the agenda? Do I hear a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
All second, she can first.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. I don't see anyone in the audience for public comment, so I would look for the consent agenda. I just noticed there, and maybe it's just me, but was there any information on the amended, amended fuel reduction? Was there something, was there information in the packet? And also to accept the resignation, the post position, the attorney's office? I didn't see any information in the packet in those two items.
The second handout, Madam Chair, that you got is, is the
Oh, that's it.
To accept the resignation for
Okay.
Of Kathy's position. And if you want to pull that to have a conversation about it, but.
Now that I know that's in there, I have no need to pull it.
And the transfer station also.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you. Anybody else like to pull anything from the consent agenda? If not, do I hear a motion to approve it?
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So that moves us into the action, to take action on the annexation. We could do our usual comments and questions, and I guess the questions would maybe go to Brady, but how about if I start with you, Commissioner Storley? Do you have anything to say about the annexation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I appreciate the comments this morning and the fact that those folks want to join us in Lutson Township. And I received only one phone call, and that was just inquiring about the process and when it would happen and public hearing and all that. Otherwise, I received nothing negative about this move in Lutson Township.
Thank you. Commissioner DeKerk.
No questions.
Commissioner Bershain.
No question.
Commissioner Deschamps.
No question.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the annexation?
So move.
Okay, competition.
You can tap it.
Thank you.
It'd be most appropriate, I'm sorry.
Okay, Commissioner Bershain, seconds. Any opposed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you fellow commissioners. I appreciate it and the support in my area and maybe other areas. There are a few other areas of this situation with the people wanting to or not becoming part of a township, which mostly is in the west end.
Yes, yeah. This is encouragement for them, maybe. Yeah, that's awesome. Thank you. Okay, so we are really ahead.
Madam Chair, if I could make a suggestion so that we don't get ahead of too far ahead of schedule, that we actually take our break now, that we were scheduled to take, take a full 15-minute break to get us to 10:30
Great.
And put us back on schedule because we have guests that are coming
Yes.
At a scheduled point in time
Great.
Today, so.
Thank you.
I make that suggestion.
Yes, very good suggestion, so we will break now until 10:30. Okay.
I'll go home and get the treats that I forgot.
He's admiring the tree.
I must debate him.
He's going home.
Power bars.
Alright.
Yeah, gotta run out in the parking lot and smoke any of it. I just don't miss them, and I've been off and on for, I mean, I've been off and on for a long time. I hope I'm one of them guys that's got two weeks to live. Because the first thing I'm gonna do is fire enough my cigarette. I have two other habits right behind me. I think three habits surprise me two weeks from now.
I don't know, I've signed everything I was told to. Okay, but then there's anything wrong. I'm sure they knew what they were doing. Otherwise, we'll do another signature. More signatures.
Oh, they're better. Absolutely, really getting pissed to steal a vacation or something. When you smell a little breeze.
Swing at the bar and go under it.
I can't do bars. I can't do bars or the casinos are really tough.
I convinced my secretary I'd only smoked five cigarettes a day.
Oh, that's good.
I'm an all-in-one.
The best thing to do is like, have a pack.
Right, that's, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm trying to do.
You really do, I mean.
So my main is, I'm not just a smoker, I'm a board smoker. So if there's any kind of lull anywhere in the neighborhood, drivers or, and I'll do it just use a walk. And before you know it, I'll have to record in the back or the other.
Get out there, do some running with some of these guys, do on Sunday.
I don't know how to do it.
I did the patches. The nicotine.
I tried the patches. And they were okay, I guess, and then I tried the pill.
The pills.
Pill's healthy for a year.
I liked the patches. The patches.
It never had on me, I never got the good taste.
I wouldn't put the patches on until late in the afternoon. I'd go as long as I could before I put them on so that they were still fairly strong at night. Great dreams.
And I was like, I guess, why would you do it? He goes, oh yeah. I said, come on, have you tried that? You're over here, I'm over there. It turned out it was warm or fair. I couldn't, I'm more times starting, more times, and I couldn't go to the door. And Mike, he forgot, and he ran away almost, by the way.
Well, that was a controversial public meeting, huh?
It was, it was pretty heated. Hardly, hardly bear it.
He goes, no he didn't. I said, yeah, he did. And so I tapped him on the face.
Now we get a better crowd than that, we're playing it so.
Yeah, you're an act.
That bunch sure filled in, didn't it?
Oh, yeah. I need to talk to Diane about maybe having reserved put in front of the microphone so that people don't just sit down right in front of the microphone.
Yeah, that could be. Actually, I think setting the table up like that is probably
More helpful. I know, I went to, I went to the back to pull the back one, and I turned around, I'm like, I want to get that.
What action or not did you do on Positive Energy?
Not.
Okay, because I've had some calls about that.
It still comes to the county board, so the county board can, you serve the planning commission if this
Yeah, you still get, you still get to deal with it.
Well, we'd like to go along with what you already mentioned.
That's what I told the public.
I like seeing the reason for letting you chair.
Well, yeah.
Who are you lucky to, are you used to a Mac?
No.
Oh, look at, his actually comes with a pen holder. Wow. Ours didn't.
Ah, Mr. Technology.
Well, basically you log on and, you know, a couple of different areas.
This keyboard has the pen holder, that's just not there.
Well, that ain't right, is it?
No. Plus, they promised me like four years ago that I'd get a computer printout. The board, and I still don't have one of the I'm just a second-class citizen these days.
Yeah.
Want you to go eat your arm out?
I'll just run back with, um, got a lot of plans without checking them, but I got two.
I wasn't surprised.
The neighbors were, they're worried about the party.
Oh, he would have loved the last
I did not realize that road is a county board house, all the way
Too many groups, too many people, too many decisions.
County board, 43 blocks.
Oh my God.
I get it.
Just wanted to go inside, just thinking about getting there. Oh, yeah, I was gonna see.
Between the wiring issue and then wanting to run a track down the road and not wanting to get
Yeah, yeah, that worked, yeah. Yeah, right.
And, and they didn't, you know, they
I love interest, too. I don't really know how to voice it. I like your word of grace, that's much better than my word of Yeah, I can get more relaxed.
We're easy, everybody.
No, but she just, she just wanted to create her brand. But I still call the artists this name.
Yeah, so Jerry Yeah, you've been there.
Well, they call the
Technically, it was
Can I send, I'd send everything county related to You got the resurface, or that makes it
Fourth of July, normally, but I think
Too torrid.
Well, we had a demo
Whatever, whatever guys you use, whatever you send to see me along, if something goes south, that can become So I always got these, my working mail, I always try to send, and we put on the website the county emails for everybody. Just because, you know, I personally, I was mostly not 60 Phillies is related to our garden owners association, you know, or Everybody, you know, everybody's private email's not necessarily appropriate to do it on.
What about mine? You nailed it.
Summer Home Road, or whatever. And then I just little lanes trying to
You nailed it. That's really cute.
Right, well, and that's
Yeah.
I probably
If you don't want to join Lutson, then that's where you are.
Well, there's no way I can join Lutson, I don't border. I don't border them at all.
So, anyway, I didn't
Unless you bordered one of them.
See letters from folks, you know, wondering about what happened with Positive Energy.
Bad idea.
Oh, yeah.
Well, they started 168.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And still you're doing their dog sledding stuff. I'm sure they'll probably still come back after this.
I want to be annexed from my neighbors, can I have my
But you know, the deal has
I need one more.
No, I need more now. That's the thing.
I was Yeah, so I cover on the corner. And they're just below the driveway loading it up, loading it with three trucks.
Yeah, I should tell you about that, too. The plan, I should, uh, did take it up, we did, go ahead and initiate the three. No actions needed.
Of the deer.
I was thinking a little
Yeah, I just can look it over. It's bad, it won't be a public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, so just get
Did you just go to the co-op?
No, I had a
Well, we're not, we haven't been involved.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, you're just And that's, that's fine, yeah, right. What they could have done is delegated that public hearing at the plant, if you felt like, you know, the board felt like it was contentious. Yeah?
Yeah. We, we
Okay, I was just curious as to why it came last to first.
Yeah, well, because, because it was the
You just can't get a camera during
It's almost just a matter
It took me seven hours to get the first section.
That's good, that's good stuff. She makes the best.
I saw her on Thursday.
That was the Lutfest for 70 something She's got it. I think that good, good They did good Lutfest, too.
Wow.
My dad had a Our town's
So you're letting from subject to subject. Oh my God, yeah. This is a whole year. And it's exciting to me, but still, I mean, this is the crap that I have to stand to take the test.
Yeah, it's a highlight of December. Hope I can go again.
Slightly. Yeah, the test, they let you take the test, I don't know how many times, but the first time and it passes it and you're back. Did you only study two hours for that one?
People talking to you up there, expressing things.
Want anyone to look at these?
I hear
Don't walk away from
You know, it's bad all over. So I think, I was kidding at that, I didn't want to go over too really well, I was asking questions about that overreach. Yeah, but I think we need to look at that, and so I'm glad you worked on it nice and hard. You know, I think it'll help if we
So they have somebody ask me yesterday, so you're Maple Hillbillies? And I go, it's not a region, it's a racing team. And I don't race, despite what's put on Facebook. And they're like, what? So it's a thing? I go, it's not a thing, it's a racing team. Someone who recently moved to the community who just saw the stickers or whatever, so assumed people who live on Maple Hill are Maple Hillbillies?
I would have assumed that. Wouldn't have known that it was
For the Maple Hillbillies.
I'm here to tell
There's sort of a few female racers on that team. Really?
He's kind of doing these graphic charts, and he's a It's amazing. He's coming back August, mid-August. And he's gonna suppose further try to find some Where to move on from there, but yeah. I mean, Nisha left, and then she came back. Now she's
It's like tennis, really.
She doesn't She's taking, she's taking off to do that moth. And, you know, she likes that kind of diversity, being a change-up and do this. And Lutson's been keeping her on as far as health insurance and stuff like that, so it's worked out really well. So she still does
That's, that's That's me, too. I like variety in my life.
You should say good county group, that's about running you off, what do you think?
Okay, it's 10:30, we can get back. And next up is Tim Nelson with the Buffer Enforcement Program Administration.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This is an item for you that has actually been a part of discussion for several months now. The state of Minnesota says, originally came out last fall with this program, wanting the counties and local jurisdictions to go ahead and adopt an enforcement program, although it's not mandated. One of the biggest sticking points that they're Um, one of the biggest, uh, sticking points that there has been, and, and it always still plays in the, in the back of our minds in terms of, uh, the state wanting to, you know, first have something as voluntary and, and yeah, we'll give you a little money and then eventually they, they withdraw the money and make it mandatory. Um, but, uh, over the past legislative session here recently, um, a lot of the original concerns that, that I had, at least, um, were, were kind of elated, because the, the message got through. Uh, most of the counties were not looking to adopt this thing. And as a matter of fact, I, I recently, last week, put a, uh, put a survey out, uh, across the, the state to all the different counties and, and got back, uh, that at this, as of last week, still fifty percent of the counties, uh, were decided absolutely to adopt in to it. And forty percent were uncertain as to whether or not they were gonna be. So most of the, most of the other counties that are uncertain about it, we're gonna be meeting today or next week. We have till June twenty-eighth to make the decision on it. And ten percent, uh, of the counties at this time said absolutely they're not going to take over enforcement of that. And frankly, what this, uh, what this is, is it predominantly really relates to those counties that are agriculture counties and counties with official, uh, ditch systems, uh, to them, where there's, uh, a lot of tillage and a lot of, uh, things that go on in the buffers to a kind of that drainage public waterway, uh, system. With regards to counties such as ours, most all of our, our buffer regulations and buffer enforcement takes place in the shoreline areas and we already regulate that. So it's really something that we are doing to an extent and, uh, the, couple of the benefits that it does provide is the, the state legislature, they changed their, their funding mechanism, uh, such that the first year we, we would get the, the minimal amount, which is forty thousand dollars as a minimum, uh, amount for counties. And then the next year, uh, we would get fifty thousand dollars. And that's all that the funding that's been approved up so far. Um, so that funding, they changed the mechanism of funding. Instead of going through Bowser or the MPCA, it's coming straight through the, um, the Minnesota Department of Revenue. So the funding is, is tracked more like the AIS program, the Inquatic Invasive Species Program, where there really isn't a lot of the intensive, uh, report writing and intensive tracking and matching and all of these requirements on it. Uh, this is basically funds that will come in and as long as we are in line with the Minnesota statute, what is it, one oh-three, uh, the type of funding or, uh, activities that, uh, are responsible or we, um, enforce and regulate, which we already are doing in our shoreline program, uh, then we can, then we just have that money. There are the funds available to us. Um, another benefit is, is that even if and as, if we do pass this resolution and we do adopt the program now, uh, we can opt out of it at any time. So if we do find, um, kind of as a circumstance, several years ago, we entered into a joint, uh, agreement or joint powers with the PCA with regards to a certain stormwater enforcement program. And we found after two years that it was not beneficial, uh, to us or to the residents of the county. So we did back out of that program, though we have our own stormwater ordinance. Um, this is one of those deals where we can opt in now and if we find that it's not advantageous to us or to the residents of, of the county, uh, we can go ahead and opt out, uh, at any time. So in the fact that they changed the funding mechanisms the way they did, they loosened up the requirements for the types of, of expenditures that can be covered and the fact that we can opt out, I've kind of changed my personal stance to being cautiously optimistic about, about this. And, um, we will have to, if we do adopt this, we will have to amend our section, uh, seven, our shoreline ordinance to cover some more items. But the other, um, ad- advantage that we do get now that we currently do not have is administrative penalty, uh, order authority. And what that is, is that currently by statute, uh, or by our ordinance, any, um, any violation of our ordinance actually turns into a misdemeanor and is prosecuted through the county attorney's office. Whereas we would like to be able to just deal on a, on a more civil manner and not have it as a criminal thing. And so if there's a, if we're dealing with the buffers and the shoreline stuff, we would like to be able to handle it through the administrative penalty order as opposed to going through any kind of criminal prosecution, uh, in the county attorney's office. So that, that is, uh, is a real benefit, uh, to us, because otherwise, if we do not adopt that program, we do not have that authority. So I guess I would go ahead and at this point recommend that we do, uh, adopt the enforcement of it at this time, uh, certainly holding out the, the reservation that we can, uh, opt out, uh, at any time.
Great. Thank you. Um, Commissioner DeShaw, do you have questions or comments for Tim?
Yeah, is there something that you would take a look at in, uh, six months or a year to see if it's working or not?
Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner DeShaw, I, I, I believe we would continually monitor this, yeah. I think the first test is, uh, once we go ahead and review through the ordinance, any ordinance amendments that we would have to make to our shoreline, uh, section in the zoning ordinance, uh, we would take, uh, a, a review of that point. Um, and then also with, with any of the enforcement or anything we would do, um, we would take a look at it, certainly within six months, absolutely, because that would take us to the end of the year and we, we write up, uh, an internal, um, department report of activity at the end of the year anyway, so absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioner Bushen.
Well, I think it's good. Um, you know, you, sometimes you never know when you need enforcement and it's nice that this has a provision for that, because, uh, I think that's something in our county that we need to think about more and more is, you know, if we do things, do we enforce them or not? And it seems to me that, uh, it's nice to have that as a tool if you need it. So I support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Kirk.
So it says we do not have to return unspent funds if we unelect jurisdiction. So if we decide in two thousand nineteen that we don't want to do it, do we have to go back and go through all of our unspent funds and return all of it or just that year?
We, we would get the funds as, no matter what. We would have to retain them. There, there is no mechanism. I think they might have something to say if we would go ahead and adopt it, get our first check and then opt out immediately after we got that check. They might have something to say about that. But otherwise, no, the, once we get it, it's just, it's, it's provided to us.
Awesome. That's it. Thanks. Commissioner Starlee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, we certainly are not an agricultural county like Blue Earth County and so it would be mostly, uh, regards to the buffers with the lake shore, right? Okay. Um, how is that administrated through you, through, what is this way it works?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner Starlee, um, basically the program would be through the, the land services offices, uh, that's, that would be my recommendation and that's why we would alter or modify our shoreline section of the, of the zoning ordinance. And I would say too, another one of the, the advantages that some of the counties have seen is that the, the constituency would rather see, uh, kind of that in, level of enforcement coming through the local, uh, units of government with local people as opposed to having the state, uh, come down and force it, because the same regulations are going to be, uh, enforced, um, by the state. So if we did not, um, elect to enforce that, then it would, it would be up to the state to enforce it. And that, that's why a lot of the counties have done it, so that it would be the local, uh, body.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Kirk, motion to approve.
Thank you. Support.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. None? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tim.
Thanks for completely filling out the request form.
Excellent job. Thank you.
Talked about it a while back and it's just nice that all the boxes are there.
Yeah. Okay. Morning, Todd, and you're gonna speak to us about the abatements.
Several.
Several, yes. Many, many.
You have a copy of the, uh, request for time with all the abatements listed in there. Probably looks a little unusual, there's a lot of them.
Yeah.
I'll explain. The, uh, abatement number one is, is a simple fifty percent homestead to a hundred percent homestead abatement that just kind of fell through the cracks. Uh, abatements two through sixteen on page one and seventeen through twenty on page two, with exception of number seventeen. Those are all abatements for state assessed properties. The state of Minnesota gives us, uh, the values that we're supposed to put in place on all utilities. Uh, power plants, the, all the substations, all, all the land, the things that, that go along with the Great River Energy, Minnesota Power, things like that. The difference between how they, they give us those assessed valuations is that those assessed valuations are for current years. So they give us a list of those values in, in fact, they gave them in June of last year for the pay seventeen. So when we enter all of our information going forward for the, for this, the eighteen, like we normally would do, because we're always working on that January second deadline, um, in this case, I put them on the eighteen, but they were supposed to be on the seventeen. So that's why we're abating these. I had to change them and I, I'd gotten notification by, uh, by Great River Energy and, uh, some of the other, uh, utility companies that they, the numbers were different than what they had gotten, uh, from the state of Minnesota. So that's why there's so many, uh, changes here. Brady and I worked this with Courtney and we, we did all the abatements, so, um, outside of that, not getting too technical about it, it's, it's, it's made a difference in tax calculation. Um, Brady gave me the calculations on that and I believe the total was about twenty-three thousand dollars in tax. So it was, it was substantial, but it's, um... And then the other abatement, if we want to look at item number twenty-one on page two of the, uh... That's actually a, just a homestead from a seasonal recreational, very simple one. And item number seventeen was the, um, the clinic down at Birch Grove was actually entered in twice. They got tax statements for both the school and the clinic and it had gotten entered in twice the year before. So we found that Barb made us aware of it, we found that we removed it, we have to abate because it was printed out in the tax statement, she got it saying, oh, we're being billed twice for this. So we had to remove that and abate it. So, other than that, I ask for your approval to finalize these, these abatements. Um, going forward, I hope to have very few abatements in the future, but when it comes to record keeping, things happen, so...
Thank you, Todd. So are there any questions, comments for Todd? I think we need to go one by one. Commissioner Kirk.
So since these are seventeen, some of these went down, some went up. Are people gonna have to pay them this year?
These were all payable this year.
Cause there's like number fifteen, their value went up a lot.
Yeah, Minnesota Power, that's because I had entered, uh, one hundred and twenty-eight-two, but it should have been four-ten-one and that's set by the state of Minnesota. So, yeah, some were down, some were up and the, the overall offset was, was a difference in valuation. It was actually, there was more, or, or, uh, my numbers here. The overall was, uh, twenty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars was the difference in tax.
Additional?
Additional or less?
It was less.
These are all utilities.
Utilities, right.
They're all Minnesota, I know. But not, but, but overall, they get a reduction, so...
Yeah.
All right. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other questions? Um, do I hear a motion?
So move.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. Are there any opposed? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
It just shows really good detail work.
Good thing, uh, Rachel and Courtney and...
Yes.
All them for that, for being there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Valerie won't be here until eleven, so I'm thinking, and Mary won't be here, so let's move to, um... If it's okay with you, Brady, can we move to you and, uh, hiring?
Yeah, that's...
Unless you wanted to pick up one of these at last.
Oh, the hiring? Yeah.
No, the hiring.
I also have the, the credit cards. I don't think anyone else is gonna be here.
Oh, okay. So great, you can take the credit cards and the hiring.
Yeah. So two departments have asked for to have individual credit cards. That's, uh, Emergency Management Director, now that it's a separate department, and Soil and Water Conservation District has asked for a credit card. Also, right now, um, Emergency Management, I'm sure she goes over and uses the sheriff's cards or comes over to the auditor's office. Soil and Water comes to the auditor's office to, uh, temporarily take a card. Of course, there's, there's always some risk with additional cards out there, they get lost, whatever. But the benefit to us is that, uh, the expenses are, are specific to various departments. And this will cut down any amount of time in our searching when there's, uh, an issue, um, yeah, either it's, you can imagine. So in, on balance, we're in favor of having these additional cards.
Okay, thank you. Um, are there any questions about that or comments for Brady? Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. Second, thank you. Are there any opposed? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Great.
And the, the second item I have is that it made an, an offer, got an acceptance, to hire Kelly Berg as the financial coordinator. Um, I'm asking to hire her at a C four-three-one, step seven. That's the, the same step at which Karen Blackburn was hired. And, uh, she's got, uh, twelve years of related background at, uh, Marisco, now McCary. And, uh, she, uh, well qualified for that.
Great.
She's been in, working the last, uh, partially the last couple of weeks with Karen in the mornings, so I really hope you approve.
Okay.
So move.
Okay. Okay. Aren't there, um, is there any discussion? Any opposed? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, now, um, we can move into, if you're ready, Mr. Cadwell, into the administrative update.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I don't have a specific update today. Um, I was out of the office for a couple of days last week and have been trying just to get prepared for our committee, the whole discussion this afternoon. Um, but there are a lot of things going on and I would just ask if anybody has any questions, I could provide summaries or I can do some research and get those back to you.
Commissioner Starlee, thank you. How are we doing with looking into, um, health insurance?
Um, thank you for that, that question. Um, we've been reviewing that at our benefits committee and we've been keeping up to date with that with, um, the personnel committee. And we are working, um, to do a study and an independent kind of, um, searching for, do our own search for options to compare against, uh, what we're getting through Northeast Service Cooperative. Also remember that last year when we got our renewal from Northeast Service Cooperative, in addition to the, the VBA eight-thirty-one plan that we've had for the last several years, we got twelve other options. So, um, we, we are doing a comprehensive search. We will have more information available to look at. We are hoping to have that done in time for us to take that into consideration during our budgeting before we set preliminary levy. We're also having that conversation as we're having negotiations with our employee groups, so that we're talking about, um, one of the, one of the strat, one of the strategies we have is that, um, we, our current contracts currently call for a specific health plan. And we're having conversations about changing that contract language with our employee groups. So, um, until we change that, we don't have much option. But at this point in time, we're having lots of conversations and we hope to have options available as we're finalizing budgeting this year.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any more questions for Jeff? I mean, we'll be talking in great depth this afternoon, the committee as a whole, and many of our questions will be discussed, so, um, but unless you have something specific you'd like him to answer now.
I would, I would provide one other, one other update, Madam Chair, is, is I'm just, um, having, exchanging some emails with, uh, Kimber from, uh, Ralsted from the hospital. And Dave Betts, our engineer, and they are coming up with plans to, um, redesign or reconfigure or work with, um, the, uh, right-of-way space and the parking lot that they're working on up there. So I know that people have seen that and wondered, when's that gonna get done? Um, I would hope that we would have a conversation in the next couple of days and we would understand what our responsibilities are to provide for a safe right-of-way and that, uh, the hospital then hopefully will approve, um, their plans going forward at their board meeting on Thursday. then hopefully will approve their plans going forward at their board meeting on Thursday morning. So I hope that that's resolved.
Great, great. Thank you for that. Okay, well, we still have ten minutes, so we can move right into our employee concerns, Commissioner Concerns Reports, if anyone has that. And also in this section, we have Commissioner Committee Assignments and I don't know if ten minutes...
We have thirty minutes.
I sent Mary an email and told her we were way ahead and that she's more than welcome to move up.
Oh, she's at eleven-twenty. Oh, we've got a lot of time. We can, yeah, we can really do those up.
We can pull out the books.
Yeah. Okay.
I have one just reminder because I can't remember if I told you all or not. June twenty-ninth, I will be down in Minneapolis at the Safe Harbor Protocol Development Conference. And reminder, Safe Harbor works with sex trafficking. So there were openings for a hundred people to be in this session and I had talked to Josh. I was personally invited and I just wanted to make sure I wasn't stepping on any toes. And Josh was very grateful to have the commissioner actually interested in this and willing to go to an eight-hour session to talk about sex trafficking. So we will be working with other multidisciplinary teams, looking to improve response to sex trafficking and sexual exploitation. And there will be people from public health, law enforcement, and the different agencies, Safe Harbor and PABSA and MNCASA working on it. So it'll be pretty intense. And I am staying with family, so there will be no charge for my, I will not be putting in per diems for mileage and I will not be charging any community members on their tax statements for my food or anything else. This is out of my love and passion for working on this subject, that I'm putting time in for this.
Oh, thanks for doing that.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes, Commissioner Kirk.
Yes, I've been contacted by Andy Hubley from ARDC. I serve on the board there, to give a little bit of time for a committee to look into the U.S. bike route that we have going on here, U.S. bike Route forty-one. There'll be a few meetings coming up and he asked if I would be on that committee, so it doesn't interfere with Tuesdays or Wednesdays or Mondays.
How about Fridays or Saturdays or Sundays?
If it interferes, I will let them know. The first meeting is actually June twenty-ninth in Duluth.
Great. So just out of curiosity, when you, is that something that you wanted to add to our list or is that like a short time?
It'll be a short time.
Oh, okay.
Give an update now and then.
Okay.
Is that what you mean?
So it's not something you want to add to our list of committees and structure?
No, because it will be a few months.
Okay, great.
Some people from Grand Portage, John, if you need to...
Great, great. Okay, wow, look at...
I do have some power.
She just conjured you up. Did you feel being conjured?
Are you ahead of schedule?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, we're quite ahead. But your guest is probably not.
He was not able to make it, actually, so...
Oh, so we can...
Chuck Braden.
Howard was going to join me though.
Okay.
Let me give him, do you mind if I?
That's just fine, because we can move ahead with another agenda item and then when you're ready, but we're ready for you whenever you are, sorry. We'll move ahead with that. But we could just, are there any other reports? Otherwise, we could move into our Commissioner Committee Assignments. And I would expect that people would bring Commissioner Kirk their ones that they...
One quick thing, WTIP.
Yes.
On our notes, it says Burschheim. On our schedule, it was supposed to be Jan, and Jan and I were switching. If you want to take it because your Wednesdays are hard to fill in, that's great, but otherwise, I was intending to take it to cover for Jan because she covered for me last week. Do you follow all of that?
Yeah, no, I do.
We start the horse trading now.
I did have it for the twenty-first and then...
Because you're on here for the twenty-eighth.
And I got it done for the twenty-eighth, and I can do either one, so it doesn't matter.
You get to pick.
No, you do.
I will do tomorrow. Then we're on this schedule.
Yeah, I think that...
Commissioner Burschheim, you're on for the twenty-eighth.
I'll do the twenty-eighth.
Okay. We do have the district meeting this week?
Oh, yes, we have the district meeting this week, yes. And we will be talking briefly about that in our committee of the hall this afternoon.
Yeah. So as far as going through the committee assignments, because if we left it the way it was, Commissioner DeChamp wouldn't have any.
That's just not fair.
And that would not be...
Fair, you might prefer it the other way.
But...
Start some committees up in there.
Yes, sure. Start some, yeah. Starting is easy.
Well, if I could just add, I was assigned, well, I volunteered to take Grand Portage Community Task Force, Grand Portage State Park Committee, Grand Portage Undoing Racism Initiative. And none of those have been functioning for some time based upon my inquiry to people up there. So, you know, those were not functional. As a, I don't know what's appropriate at this, but while I'm speaking about that, I think it's a natural segue is, I think I have some other assignments that just don't seem to exist or were in the past or something like that. And I know that we got the whole issue, how do we proceed ahead with another commissioner involved now, but I think at some point, we need to just really give this some time and talk about these things. And I'm not saying it should be a rush, but I don't know if we're going to do this in twenty minutes or thirty minutes, but...
Well, what we could do in twenty or thirty minutes would be if there's some things on your list that you took that maybe weren't on the list before, you know, we could just lay out some of the things as possibilities for Commissioner DeChamp to take on.
Many of these actually exist?
Well, that...
There's two right there that don't exist.
Most of them.
And I think barring the ones that don't exist, I don't think we need to discuss that.
Yeah, I guess, you know, we should have looked at the old list where we had...
Oh, because you probably don't even know which ones you did.
Well, I picked, I took some, I took some of these that didn't exist because I wanted to be involved in Grand Portage, but just for my own interest and commitment. But I think that we should proceed by looking at the list when we had a representative from this area so that we had the distribution at that time.
You mean Frank's old list?
Yes.
You could probably remember some of those.
But I think, Bobby, you're restricted on what?
Yeah, because I can do evenings and Fridays.
Right, which makes it a lot easier. If you looked at Frank's list, it wasn't evenings. So one I've got...
If we all looked at our evenings and Fridays, what can we?
I already highlighted, I have Cook County Local Energy Project. Frank was on that one, and that one, we've kind of bounced around. We had Gary on it, I was on it, Frank was on it. That is usually a Monday evening and they're pretty flexible. So I would be willing to give you that as a main and I'll be the alternate if you can't come in, if you're out in the field. Sounds like a good start. And then also, there was a discussion of ARC, which is on the third Fri-, is it the third Friday, second Friday?
Yes, third Friday.
Third Friday in Saginaw, Minnesota. Myron and I are on that and that one changes annually. This year, we have two commissioners that vote and represent us. So if you're interested in that, I would be willing to have you take my place. And then I think we should have that one listed as two and an alternate. And then next year, it will change to be one and an alternate. But I would be willing to be the alternate on that. If Myron, you're okay, I know you have a lot of travel.
Yeah, I think I was assigned that as the primary and then I think maybe what we would do after this year is if you're interested in that, I would drop off at that time because we don't have one representative. If you're interested, but I'm, you know...
Are you okay with continuing?
Yeah, yeah. I think we talked about it and I have more time on Fridays than you do.
So is that okay with you, Commissioner DeChamp?
Yeah.
Okay, so it sounds like we've got, we moved one to a Friday. We've got two commissioners and an alternate.
I don't have any, and that would take up a Friday, so that's pretty much an all-day thing.
Okay, so there goes a Friday.
Who was my...
I can have a third Friday.
Yep. Who was the alternate on C-Club to me?
I think it's me.
Are you okay with me being the alternate to Bobby?
I'm happy with that.
Yes.
Did you contact Julie?
Yep, I told Kay the other day that there would be a switch. I just didn't know what the final would be.
So if you would just do that?
Yep, I'll send her a text.
Mary, do you have an estimated time that you'd like to?
Howard was going to leave immediately and head down the hill.
Okay, great. So we'll just put you on when, if you don't mind sitting through?
You go ahead. This is good.
Okay, great, because I think we're making a little progress and anything we can do today, I think, good.
Madam Chair, can I just ask that everybody make the notes that they make and turn them in at the end of the meeting and I'll get them to Julie and she'll reformat them and this, you know, we won't finish today. I would also, I would also go to the top and possibly say we should establish which of the standing committees Commissioner DeChamp is going to participate on and then the AMC standing committees, and then we have all of these things that we can work through as well.
Great, let's do that.
Oh, AMC Policy Committees, do we have a list of the policy committees? No.
I'm down for safety. No, I'm not, and I'm voting up in Human Services. So safety is wide open.
Well, Transportation, because I would, because Bobby goes to the Highway Committee meeting.
Yep.
So I will take a leave from that if you want to just keep going with that. And then you would be part of the Transportation when we go to the statewide AMC committees.
So then Ginny, would you be Safety? Because you're currently Transportation, right?
Yep.
And the one that was open was Safety?
Right.
Are you okay with that? Okay. Great.
Then I went to the AIS Invasive Species Group and Frank had gone to that. And I like it, so I'd like to stay with that.
Is that an evening?
Nope.
So you got it then.
Yeah, it's yours. But then we also have County Invasive Team, so I've never been to that. Isn't that just the same thing?
It's an invasive.
It's invasive, yes.
That's not water, that's plant.
Yeah.
Oh, there's two different species that invade us.
Well, I went to...
Well, I can keep invasing. I'll just keep on doing that.
Keep all the invasives, yeah.
Okay, and then...
Oh, wait a minute, back to the aquatic. You are the alternate, Heidi.
On the aquatic, and that's a day meeting? Then I'll stay the alternate.
Okay.
On AMC, the Indian Affairs Task Force, that is not a primary and alternate. Most of these committees are primary and alternate, which we'll get into detail on that later. AMC, they love as many people as possible to be on that. So we just have to let Rachel know how many of us are voting members. I'm a voting member, Jan's a voting member. You're welcome to also be a voting member.
So we could have five voting members on there?
Yes, we can.
Wow, that could be powerful.
Well, it's not a ton of voting and it's not a huge group, but we have a band in our community and so it's important for us to be a part of the conversation. So the issue with that one is that it happens at our annual meeting and it's usually the night before festivities start, so you've got to get down to AMC soon enough to get there. And I think that's part of why they don't have a lot of turnout. But if you would like to be counted as a voting member, I will probably see Rachel this week and let her know. Okay, I will add you on this list.
So does that cover all the AMC things?
I think so.
So we could just break there, then go to our EDA conversation and then come back?
Myron and Ginny, did you want to be voting members on the task force so that I can give Julie the correct names?
Yeah, I'm an alternate, but I would like to be involved in the Indian Affairs Task Force, so...
I will verify with Rachel that she's okay with having our entire...
So I'm sorry for, Madam Chair. So we're going to continue a discussion, because I have someone on here that...
Yes.
We're going to go to...
We're going to go to the EDA conversation first. Seeing as the EDA people are here, we're going to go to that and then we'll continue our discussion afterwards. Seeing as Howard put aside everything on his desk, and Mary put aside everything on his desk.
That's Mary and I are today like...
Yes.
Madam Chair, Barb?
Good morning.
We're here with good news. The EDA has signed a development agreement with Spectrum Health to start the development and build assisted living facility in Grand Marie. We have picked out two lots. They are the EDA lots across from Law Enforcement Center. Do you have maps?
We do, yes.
So over the last year or so...
That's helpful for the actual physical, rather than just looking at a map.
After the, over the last year or so, we've vetted out several of the properties, you know, in and around EDA Park and Grand Marie above the hospital and so forth. With city and planning and zoning and city officials and Spectrum, they deemed that, you know, the best lot to start with. So they, what they needed to move forward is a development agreement so that they can start spending money on soil borings, architects and things like that. The reason we are before you today as part of that development agreement is to convey those two lots to Spectrum for a dollar, which is below market rate. I just talked to Scott Harrison this morning, he said, "Well, maybe it's not really below market rate," but it's a...
Geez, such an argument.
Anyway, what they, what they, along with the development agreement in selling those lots, they are, they have to build the assisted living within a timeframe. If they don't, you know, those lots revert back to the EDA. You know, they're conveyed at that deal just for the incentive to build that facility, which will be a multimillion-dollar investment, provide probably somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-five full-time equivalent jobs, and then provide housing for assisted living for those folks that need that in our community. We held a public hearing to sell those lots at our last EDA meeting. We had several of the public there. Welcome, Commissioner DeChamp, by the way. Congratulations. Good to see you sitting up there. All the public comments we had are very positive, you know, for bringing in assisted living. John Monticelli, who's President and CEO of Spectrum Health, had wanted to be here, but he got called to a corporate meeting, so he could not be. I think there's a letter that...
I have copies of a note from John that I'll give you.
Kind of explains their company, but they're a very strong company. They've got quite a number of assisted living, mostly in northern Minnesota, but they also have them in the cities in southern Minnesota. So anyway, any questions?
There will be, I'm sure.
Yes. The City Council, City Council had a lot of really good questions.
Great.
It's on TV.
Oh, yeah. Did they approve?
They did, yes.
Thank you. So Commissioner DeChamp, we'll start with you if you have questions or comments.
No, I'll wait.
Thank you.
I think the assisted living thing is a great thing. I don't have no problem with that at all, but I do have a problem with giving them the land for a dollar. Everybody else in the business park purchased their land, PDs, Dave.
Right.
That's my biggest holding point on it.
Yeah, no, it's, I have some heartburn, but it's the incentive to what they bring to the community, certainly the tax base. It'll be the biggest taxpayer in the EDA park and probably, you know, one of the bigger ones in Grand Marie, actually. Do you have some?
Yeah, I can add to that. When we were preparing a report to the community last spring, I spoke with Brady and the assessor on the estimated property tax to be generated by this facility. The budget for the facility is about $5 million and Brady and Todd gave me the number of $60,000 for property tax to be generated. So the last two lots that were sold at the business park were sold for $27,500 apiece. This, if the property taxes in this ballpark, it will equal that amount in the first year that it pays taxes. So I don't think any of us are, you know, would disagree with you, Bobby, that that's a tough decision to make, but looking long-term, it gets that property on the tax rolls and provides a great accommodation to our seniors. So that's where we went with that decision.
Commissioner Burschheim?
Good work. It's important. What is, from your perspective and experience with this, what is the probability that we'll have the work, the housing component and then possibly, you know, some childcare? Is that sort of going to be further discussion?
The Spectrum is aware of the housing situation here and they are a very strong company, Merle Sampson, who's... strong company, Merle Sampson, who's the, the owner, uh, is quite, has a lot of resources and, uh, the reason they're, they're picking up the two lots instead of one is they are contemplating, it's not in a development agreement, but they're certainly contemplating and have the ability, uh, they have told us, to put housing in, um, you know, for themselves or, or just in the market, so, and, and Mary has started some conversations about daycare, uh, it's kind of a new conversation, but, you know, it's all, as we look at employment and economic development, uh, it's really hard to separate daycare, housing and, and, you know, providing, you know, incenting somebody to come in and, and providing, uh, something that will need, well, great employment, because it's, it's a, they're all mixed together, uh, you can't have, it's hard to get the right kind of employment, you know, for, you know, staff, you're going to have, uh, family, uh, age people and, you know, if you don't have childcare, they can't have a job, so it's, it's one, uh, that our whole community is working on and will have to solve, um, and we hope that they will be a partner in helping with that.
Just to follow that up, I, you know, I think the, uh, the real important aspect here is workforce housing to come with it, because that would be a great, uh, way to set a precedent.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
You want to could do business here for a provider. I'm sorry, but I mean, you know, that's, that's nice.
There is no, there is no commitment, but certainly discussion on that.
Yes, I know that they are having discussion there in their offices and, um, in terms of the childcare, I know that John from Spectrum is looking to schedule a conversation with Jeff and Josh Beck, and they've not begun to have those conversations yet, but I, you know, that's where it starts.
Thanks for the segue to workforce housing, which will lead, which will lead into my history lesson, you two are not here, I don't know that you two are here.
We were born.
No, you weren't, you weren't here when the county board gave these two lots, along with the city, to the EDA for zero dollars, so we're ahead with a one dollar profit, zero dollars.
And even up in...
For workforce housing. And the workforce housing has been picked in two other locations and these lots were not utilized for workforce housing, so we already gave these lots with the city in approval to the EDA for zero dollars for another project, so, just so you know the background on this and kind of how we got to where we are and how we're there and everything else, so, so one dollar is a hundred percent increase in profit.
Two times a...
So, um, and this has been a really long discussion and a lot of work with the city and other entities on this, and so, yes, I am usually the holdout EDA member that never takes the first offer on any lots and wants to get double what the people are offering for the lots and I feel they're worth more than what we ever get for them, but they'd never sell if they went for what I asked for, so, I, I support this.
Thank you. Commissioner Sterling?
Thank you, Madam Chair, well, on my black and white copy, I wasn't really sure...
Your copy doesn't look so good.
Didn't look very good.
Yeah, this is really helpful.
So, um, I had to drive up there to look at it from the car, I did not get out to walk it, um, but I could tell the slope starts kind of at the road level and then mm goes down toward Seventh Avenue, and there's ditching in front of it, and back in oh-five there was a wetland delineation report, so can you tell me what is being looked at as far as the surface and wetlands there?
That'll be part of the surveys that they commence, now that, you know, while we'll have this development agreement after the, if you verify or endorse the sale of the land, uh, that'll be part of the due diligence and the work that they will do, uh, on the property, you know, we have walked the property with John, uh, he's looked at it, uh, he's, you know, shared that with his, his principals and, um, you know, he feels it's buildable, uh, part of the project is geothermal, um, for their heat requirements and, uh, there's some tax advantages and evidently some, uh, loan, uh, advantages using geothermal, so, uh, he'll be looking at that, soil, soil borings, uh, if there's wetlands, I know we've done a lot of mitigation in the EDA park, I don't know what we've done there, it's, uh, you know, if there are wetlands and they have, and they can't design around the wetlands, of course, it's just a, a matter of buying the credits that are necessary, so, that's yet to be determined, some of those questions.
There's also a trail on the upper lot that we've had discussions about.
Yeah.
And, um, I, John's vision, if it works out when the soil testing is done, is, um, to build the assisted living on the lot that's below that big drainage ditch and then a bridge and then employee housing on the lot, probably apartments, I would guess, on the lot above, so that's how he sees being able to use that land even though it has an eight-foot ditch running through it.
Yeah.
Two separate buildings.
Yeah.
Max Wallers wanted to build something there and it was turned down because he wanted employee housing in his shop?
No, Max, he, Max has a lot, um, that's inside the park on the, on the east side, where he did build a building and built housing on top of it, but that side of the business park isn't zoned for housing, inside the Circle Drive, um, the west side is zoned for owner occupied, so you can have a business on the lower level and live upstairs or side by side or whatever you build, but he's not on the side that that's allowed and so the EDA was not able to approve, it would require going to planning and zoning and to the City Council and changing the zoning for the whole business park, and the change that was made to the owner occupied was five or six years ago or a fewer than that, less years, and I understand that it was very difficult for everyone to come to agreement on that zoning change, because it's already, there is already established, like, industrial use, big trucks and big equipment driving in and out of that, uh, business park every day and the very, um, concern on the part of planning and zoning and the city councilors with children, mixing children with truck traffic and, so...
It's also, the five lots are also zoned owner occupied, which is not employee housing, it was very specific by the City Planning Commission that you couldn't have your employees living at your property, it had to be owners of the business, so there, I mean, right now you can't have employee housing on any lots in there, it has to be the owner of the business.
But I would also add, Commissioner DeChamp, that I've had a few people talk to me in the time that I've been here about completely revisiting the zoning of the business park and, because business parks aren't functioning in America the way they were twenty or thirty years ago, so it might be time to revisit that whole conversation and see if, you know, if we can come to agreement to be more creative.
But that's all outside the scope of this discussion.
Yeah, sorry.
Get us back on track.
Thank you.
Statement of kids and trucks and then they build a school on the truck roads.
Yeah.
Which made it easier for us to sell a reason to have a children area.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, um, and I just wondered, Jeff, if you would be willing to just speak to the issue of, of giving land for a dollar in other cities, municipalities, et cetera, and if you don't, I could say that, but I know, from your experience, you know that this is a normal practice.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioners, the, the, so we've got three requests, three projects that the EDA is currently working on and, um, and one of them, we've, we've had a cash subsidy to bring the price down so that people can get into the housing at a lower rate, we're using financing options that are available to us as a local unit of government to extend the term of the loan, to reduce the annual payments, again, so that we can reduce the rate coming in, um, this other option of selling land at a reduced value is also a very typical economic development tool and, um, in, in every community that I've been in, when there's been a business park or there's been a housing development or there's been a platted, uh, development, people have always been very willing to say, "We'll give you land if you sign a development agreement, build something within a year that puts this, this parcel back on the tax rolls and, and works, um, to improve our capacity, to provide tax relief essentially to everybody else who's already paying taxes," um, there were, there were conversations during the run-up to the election, that, uh, what we ought to be doing is giving these parcels away, and I, I think that essentially giving the parcel away with a contract that says we're going to develop a five million dollar property and, and pay one of the highest percentages of county taxes in one bill, I think is a very appropriate consideration, um, it's certainly, we certainly have the authority to do it, uh, the EDA is here simply because they, the authority we've given them says they can't do it without the blessing of both of the authorizing boards.
Great, got it, so, um, I have a question just about the dollar, um, does it have to be something?
I guess.
Okay, so, dollar...
Yeah, I think, I think there has to be, I think there has to be consideration and I think the dollar represents consideration.
Okay. Great, thank you. Motion to approve. Thank you.
Second?
Second? Okay, more discussion, seeing, need for more discussion, okay, Commissioner Sterling, so, have you seen the plans for the building?
That's, that's part of the process going forward, that's a no.
We have samples of their other facilities in the eight or nine other communities where they have them, Commissioner Sterling, um, they won't have the building designed until they determine what the soils are, so, that's, as Howard mentioned earlier, for us to be able to sign the development agreement and make the commitment to the, bringing the land to the project will enable them, they need to know that we're in this as a partner, as a committed partner, before they go start to spend significant money to do the work that they need to do, to then design the building.
Yeah, we, we've been invited, but we, I don't think anybody from ED has gone up, they've just, uh, opened, uh, a new facility in Virginia, Minnesota, and as they've been building these alter over the last quite a few years, they, they are evolving their, their model and, uh, the last two or three, uh, represent kind of their new thinking on, on how these things are structured, so, uh, I would guess at some point we will make a trip up to, to, and I think anybody's invited to, to go, to, to look at their newest, at least, assisted living facility.
And the way, one of the things that John has shared with us about their design is they make it a flexible building so that if they need more room for memory care, then they can shift a wall or open a door that closes off that portion from the assisted living and the more intensive care, it, it's a flexible designed space so that they can accommodate changing needs for the residents at any given moment.
I have been to the one in Silver Bay.
Silver Bay.
Yeah, and that, that's an older model, uh, he said, so...
It's greatly improved since then?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Well, Madam Chair, since, I'm still really concerned about the soil and all that, I'm going to be abstaining.
I hope, okay, um, did you want to ask a question about this or...
No, well, right now, I, you know, I, I think this is a well-needed project, I'm just concerned about the land and, and that situation until you tell me...
Yeah, well, we did look at, we did look at four sites, I think, just, you know, up along the New Gun Plin, um, and, you know, if that property proves to be unsuitable, uh, I'm sure we'll go back and revisit, um, and maybe, I think we'd have the ability to, to kind of exchange properties and look at a different one.
And get a different property, or if it, you know, it, if it doesn't work out that they can build there, then the title to the land just comes right back to us and we give them back their dollar, I guess.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, if I could just make a comment, um, I appreciate Commissioner Sterling's concern, um, but the development agreement is contingent on them building this and, um, abstention really requires that there's some reason that you would have a conflict against voting for or against, so, um, a person, Commissioner can't actually abstain from making a decision, you can vote against it because you haven't got that much information, but abstaining from, a vote to abstain really indicates that you have some conflict with it, so, the, the EDA representatives have, have represented that and, and I've, I've seen enough of the conversation and the development around this to know that there is a developable, developable property here, there is room to do the scale of something that they want to do, and the, and the approval is, is really, we, is to tell them to go ahead and start the engineering so that they can do this, and, um, if the engineering shows that they're not going to be able to do it, then it comes right back to us, so there's really no harm in this unless, um, but, so, so two points, one is, this is not at the point in the time where we have the full development plans, because they needed to secure the property before they would spend the money to engineer the building, and that's the point that we're at, and two is, the question related to abstention really requires a, a reason why there's a conflict of interest to not participate in the vote, otherwise, um, Commissioners really do have a responsibility to vote for or against something that comes as a motion.
Does it need to be unanimous?
No, it does not need to be unanimous.
So I would just like to add that, um, the idea of value in getting this property for a dollar, I mean, there are probably a couple of levels to look at that, one, one level, which I, I'm sure is tweaking a lot of community members, is the idea of fairness and some people had to pay and why do these people not have to pay, kind of thing, but I think the, the story that's been told that has proved out in other communities is that the, the investment that's made is far outweighs the value of the investment of the land and, and so what it is is sort of a public-private partnership and that we're really investing in this project and that's the piece we're investing, and to me, that covers the fairness issue, the other piece, um, for me, um, that covers the fairness issue and enhances the value of all the other lots, um, this development would really enhance the value of the other lots so that, um, um, because we're, you know, we're now approaching fewer lots, so supply and demand and, and economic development, all those things are going to add value, so it's going to make it harder for you lots, perhaps, but, um, so I, that issue doesn't tweak me at all, I do, um, it would be, I realize that this is a harder question, it'd be, um, interesting just to know what the, the perceived, what the value of our investment is, so, um, we have the two lots and we know what that value is to some extent, and, um, so if we knew that in terms of what, what is our actual investment that we're putting in and then the, what we're getting is a possible five million?
Probably sixty grand, you know, for third, you know, just around number thirty per lot.
Okay, that's, so that is really helpful, yeah. So we're looking at sixty thousand dollars to bring in a...
Five million.
A five million dollar, um, investment in our community.
That's what we estimated when we were looking at housing, when we did the applications, we had to have a value on that land.
Yeah, because that's really helpful to just know what, what we're going to invest in. Commissioner Kirk?
Kind of along what Commissioner Severson has had, I've had people say, you know, "I paid full price when I bought my piece in there, yes, this is a business park, yes, the EDA is the one working to sell the lots," but when you buy real estate anywhere, somebody might get a really good deal and somebody might feel that they're getting a good deal when they buy it and five years later think it's not such a great deal, and so you can't say on real estate, anyone that's up there, I, I'm grateful for people that jumped on board right at the beginning and purchased a land and I appreciate having there and I, and I'm sorry that at this point some of them feel like they paid too much because they're now going for less, but it's going to happen with any real estate that you buy anywhere, that there's going to be fluctuations and there's going to be markets and we have the two thousand eight crash, which has put us kind of in the situation we're in right now, so...
But with this development, their investments could be more valuable, so...
They will be.
Yeah.
It's just, it's really hard when you invest money in your business and your time to see it that way.
Yeah.
And I get that and I understand and, and we're not in any way trying to usurp anyone or make them feel bad about their purchase.
So I don't want to prematurely jump in for a vote, um, but, um, do people feel comfortable with the information that they've received so far? Um, so I would just say, um, are there any, um, folks opposed? And just reiterating, um, the Cook County Grammar EDA is seeking approval from the Board to sell the identified business park parcels to Spectrum Health Companies for one dollar, that's what we're voting on, so, are there any opposed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. That's still...
Thank you. Thank you very much. This, this is very exciting. This is, we've been working, the community's been working on this for a long time and this is really a nice step, so.
As an opinion of land sales, it might be exciting for you. It's a little stressful for me.
Yeah.
We're invested in another project.
And I just want to leave, John Monticelli did send me a note in an email yesterday. I brought copies. I'll just leave them here with you if that's all right.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. And if you could still give us updates on the wetlands, I'd appreciate it.
No, the news blackout now.
I know where to get ahold of you.
The, the city council said the same thing. Really, this is the start of the project and I'll, you know, we'll have regular updates, I would guess.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So I think we are, we already made the, the action on our deputy, did we?
We did.
Okay, good. So I think we're ready to recess?
Are we going to finish this?
Have we finished this?
Oh, yeah, we have finished.
No.
Nice try, Jan.
Quickly, I forget. Okay, back to the conversation about Cook County Commissioner assignments. So we've gotten through the AMC section and now we're into the weeds of the, all the other committees. So maybe.
Madam Chair, if I could, we, we started the conversation about the public safety and transportation, or the, or the standing committees.
Yes.
And Commissioner Starley was, was suggesting over here that Commissioner DeShaw take, take her spot as the commissioner on the Highway Services Advisory Board, which she's already been serving on, so that, that makes sense. But we didn't have a conversation about our standing committees. And right now, we've got the Budget and, and General Government Committee, and that's Commissioner Bershym and Commissioner Starley. We've got the Personnel Committee, which is Severson and Dukeirk. And then we've got the Public Safety and Transportation, which right now is Bershym and, and Dukeirk. And I think that's the committee, I don't mean to speak for you, but Public Safety and Transportation is probably the standing committee that I think Commissioner DeShaw would be most interested in. So I would like for us to arm wrestle as to which of the one of you would be willing to give up a standing committee assignment on that one and then, and then delve back into the rest of the list if that's appropriate.
Public Safety is the second Wednesday.
In Public Safety, we would, we, we have the ability to change that based on, you know, that is, that is myself and the two commissioners and whichever department heads are available. So I think if, if Commissioner DeShaw wants to be on that committee, then we would make that at a point in time that's available to him.
Okay. Myron, how are your feelings?
I don't care. Well, I care, but I mean, I'm willing. I.
Is there one you're ready on?
I served on, on the public transportation one, too. So I have a little bit of background in that, but I, I defer to you again.
Well, that, right now, falls on a day when you have to travel. And it would be changed to a different day and time to cover.
Second Wednesday?
Yeah, that's the one we do at 8:00 in the morning. It would be changed to a different time.
And I'm assuming that we would change that to a Friday that meets with Commissioner DeShaw's schedule.
Saturday.
Saturday.
I'd like Saturday, too. If it changes to a Friday, then I would step off because I've got a full plate on Friday. So that would be.
So it'd be the second Friday?
Well, yeah, however that works.
Well, I tie it up on the third Friday.
So.
Oh, yeah. So I mean, if you do a Friday, anyone else want to do it? He doesn't.
Can you talk to department heads? We'll put Bobby.
I don't.
Can, can I ask a question, Commissioner? Is, when you say evening or afternoon, what, what time is afternoon or evening?
Uh, after, I'd get, I'd work at 4:00 or something.
Okay, so 5:00 o'clock.
Yeah.
5:00 o'clock or later.
Six, 5:30.
One, one of the challenges, and, and I, and I'm completely, as far as administration and staff want to honor the, the requests and whatever we come up with for a revised schedule. But whenever we schedule meetings in the evening, we're putting additional requirements on our, our staff that have to prepare and, and be at those meetings, which is why I'm suggesting Friday for this standing committee because we typically have two or, or three department heads and our staff there to support that meeting. And that may not be the place, that may not be the time to do it. Maybe we do have that as a 5:00 o'clock meeting one afternoon.
Well, I mean, if that's what it takes to get it done, I guess, then I'll do it on a Friday, second Friday, but.
First, second, or fourth Friday.
Well, there's not a lot of fourth, well, there are. I mean, if I'm the only one that can do it, I'll do it.
Well, at this point, how about if we, if we go with that and if that turns out to be inconvenient, we always have the opportunity to change our, our makeup of these committees.
Okay.
Yeah, no. You're welcome.
So that kind of covers the big rocks, right? AMC and our standing committees? And then we can move into, and maybe, I mean, are there, among the four with existing committees, are there any evening or Fridays that we, you could eliminate from your schedules and perhaps ask Commissioner DeShaw if he could do those?
I am the alternate on, on YMCA and Jen, that's at 4:00, isn't it?
Actually, that's Myron's committee.
I'm on it.
That's a 4:00 or later, isn't it?
Well, sometimes we have 4:00, 5:00, and 6:00, depending upon the committee.
So I'd be willing to give.
Which is every other month, so.
It's Myron in my alternate position since it's an evening, so if you can't make it, he might be able to cover it.
Or give Commissioner DeShaw your alternate.
Yeah, that's what I.
Yep, yep.
Are you comfortable with that? That means you're not required to.
YMCA.
YMCA.
Advisory Council.
Yep.
Except that the meeting in Duluth is on the first Wednesday of the month at noon.
But that's a separate one. This one is the local one.
Yeah, no. Man, I.
You still have a primary.
Yeah.
For sure, for sure.
Sure, no.
You're the primary. So we'll put Bobby as alternate.
Yeah, it's kind of a dilemma there. Too many evenings. I mean, I have North Shore Management Board and that one is quarterly. It's at 6:00, usually in Beaver Bay. That's a possibility, North Shore Management Board. I would love to, the emergency, the radio board is one that I have just a hard time keeping up with. But that's a monthly and it's in Duluth or showing up in Law Enforcement Center to be on video. It's Wednesdays at 10:00 a.m., so that doesn't exactly fit into your schedule.
I could sit next to Mike in there.
Yeah. Hey, you could.
Is he on video, too?
I mean, that, yeah, because Mike is on there and he shows up on video. I mean, if that would work for you, that would be, because Rowan would show up here. That would be awesome.
Radio communications?
Well, then he would know, let me know when the meeting is, too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know.
Oh, love that.
I'm sorry I'm interrupting, but, you know, I mean, if there's anything that Bobby can do by teleconference up there.
Right.
That might be a thing you could work in.
That's the N-E-M-N Emergency Communications Board, former radio board. It's down here, right there.
Well, there's a lull. May I interject?
Yes.
When we think that we should no longer contribute to a standing committee, that we do that sort of at the end of the year?
We can do it during the year. We've dropped committees during the year.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
By motion of the board.
So anything, but maybe hold that thought until we get this, let's, you know, keep focused on what, what can, let's get Commissioner DeShaw's schedule.
I get there anyway, so that's another.
Yeah.
Another issue that I do have some conflicts, so I find out that I can't go to meetings because I'm going to other meetings.
Well, can you have any of those that you could?
Well, the Laurentian Resource Conservation and Development Commission has been problematic for me.
And when do, when do they meet?
And, well, it's sporadic and I don't think it's worthwhile. Oh, excuse me, that's.
Ginny's your alternate.
Northern Counties Land Use Coordinating Board is very effective, but this Laurentian Resource Conservation Development Commission has been problematic for me.
And when do they meet again?
Well.
Sporadic?
Well, it has been because I think they're, I don't want to say this on tape, but it hasn't been consistent. And I'm just going through here. It's been every other month. So I have to go through.
Are any of the items on their agenda, items that come back to us as?
I, I think we could drop it based upon.
Ginny, how do you feel? That's kind of, you're the alternate.
I'm the one.
Okay.
I would make a suggestion that if we've got issues like that, or if we've got scheduling conflicts with the committee assignments that you have, that you provide feedback to myself and Julie, so that we can make sure to communicate with the, the people who have made the request to have you there and, because essentially, that's oftentimes what it has, it has happened, is those boards have asked for representation from us. And we certainly can negotiate that. We can certainly look at the scheduling of that. And we can certainly evaluate which ones we, we should be participating in.
That's a great idea.
But, but if, if Julie and myself are kept in the loop as far as scheduling problems, as far as whether we think we ought to continue our support of this organization through participation in these meetings, then, then we can, we can have that conversation. But if we don't get that information, then we just keep looping up old information on these lists.
So how about if each of us takes those, those meetings, those committees, and we put, we give that information to Julie.
And Jeff.
And Jeff. And they create a list of the committees that are not working for the people who have them, and then bring that list to a meeting and then we can negotiate from those. Because that, that seems like it's streamlined the.
And if we haven't had a meeting so far, could we assume that we, we're not going to have meetings so far?
Yeah.
I mean, I've got quite a few.
I'd still like that feedback because I would, I would ask Julie to follow up with the coordinator of that and say, you know, we had had a commitment here. Do we need to continue that or do we discontinue it?
It's like the BWCA, W land exchange. I know that's sort of going on.
That is not done. So we cannot remove that.
Okay, good. Well, then I'll continue with it.
But yes, if there are any of those committees that we have that we, that have never met, let's add those to our list and then submit them to Julie and Jeff. And then we'll have this list of the committees that are issues for us and then we can bring that to a meeting and then we at least have specifics to discuss. And I think it'll look better.
Jeff, can you look into ATV Trail Planning, US Forest Service DNR and County? That's on my list under AMC and Art Approval. I have been on that, I think, for a long time and they haven't met. That I know of, or they don't know that I'm on it. That could be the other thing is they don't know.
So they would go on your list of, of question mark meetings.
Yep.
Yeah. That'd be great. So does that help? Is everybody pretty clear about what we've decided so far? And then the next step is to just make this list, create the list, then we'll bring the list to a meeting, discuss it, make new assignments.
So we go to Julie with our concerns.
Our list of concerns.
Yeah, that radio communication, I can do that right with Mike and we're, we're in the same office, so.
That's so fantastic. Yeah, that's awesome. Do you, yeah, because I don't think, and there's also the Communications Armored Tower E-911 Committee, but I don't know, we don't usually have a video for that. But I know Mike attends that, too. But Mike is not, you, Mike is a separate person, so I don't know that, so, but anyway, we'll create these lists and then we'll be able to go forward. That sounds fantastic. Yeah, and particularly if there's anything in the evenings that you might be willing to give up, or Fridays that you might be willing to give up, but to work, to spread the load, redistribute the load. Okay, because I think there, I think I counted there were 128 committees. And that doesn't count the alternates, so.
And, and I would, I would note that as I review some of our regional partners, the list of committees that they support through, through their boards is usually limited to one or two pages.
For everybody?
So, so we, we have a lot more commitments. You, you as commissioners have a lot more commitments than commissioners in other counties do.
Oh, that's good to know.
At this point in time.
Interesting.
Yeah. They know how to say no better than we do.
Well, we're isolated and we probably have more needs.
Or we're just, we collaborate better.
Who knows?
I think it has a little history, I'm sure.
Yes.
So are you ending this negotiation session?
I think so, yeah.
So I, well, we have to make a motion on it and I just wanted to review what I wrote down. I have Bobby taking on ARC, which is Corrections, with Myron and me as the alternate, because right now, there's two voting members. CCLP, Bobby is the main, me is the alternate. AMC would be Transportation, now goes to Bobby, and Ginny gets Safety. Indian Affairs Task Force, I will verify that we can all be voting members. Public Safety is now Bobby and Myron. That one's pending. YMCA, Bobby would be the alternate. And then Radio Communications, Bobby would be the main. Who is the alternate on that? That'll stay the same. And I would make the motion to accept those changes.
I'll second that.
So then when we.
He gets no say.
Madam Chair, so when we, we'll take action again because we all have things.
But there's more. We're not done.
So this is not conclusive?
No. But I just, it's good to act on what we've got and clarify that.
And then if Julie could send us all Frank's list originally to help us refresh our memories?
Oh, that would be great for that next meeting. Do we need to consider a time for that? Okay, that'll just happen in our fall. Great. Great. So any more discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, I think that sums up our session this morning.